I still remember the sound of his boots on my driveway, slow, heavy, like he owned the whole street. He did not smile. He did not explain. He just slapped that yellow notice on our RV like he was marking a crime scene. Then he whispered something that chilled me. He said, "I finally got you people." He didn't know who I was. He didn't know who my cousin was. He didn't know what lines he was about to cross. He thought he had power. He thought he had control. He thought this RV would be his little victory. He had no idea his entire world was about to flip. Because the moment I made one phone call, everything changed. Welcome back to our channel HOA Stories. A mark. I live in a small suburban neighborhood on the west side of the city. I work from home. I mind my business. I pay my dues. I follow rules. I am not the type who looks for trouble. Trouble came looking for me. If you really hate HOAs or you love seeing corrupt people get exposed, make sure you hit subscribe right now. Drop a bow HOA, or anything you want in the comments. Let the algorithm know you stand against these petty power games. Share this story with anyone who ever fought an HOA. Now let's start from the moment everything went wrong for me. The HOA cop showed up on a Tuesday morning. A random Tuesday, the kind where nothing is supposed to happen. I was standing in my driveway with a cup of cold coffee, just staring at our RV. The same RV we used every summer. The same RV that never bothered anyone. The same RV that the HOA tolerated for years, until him. He came out of nowhere. Big guy, bigger ego, shaved head, mirrored sunglasses that showed your face but never showed his eyes. He walked like he was in a movie, hands on his belt, chest pushed forward, that little smirk that says, "I am the law here." He did not greet me. He did not ask a question. He went straight to the side of the RV and slapped a notice on it. It made a loud pop, like a starter pistol, like he was announcing the beginning of a war. I looked at him and said, "What is this?" He did not even turn. He said, "Violation parking impound." Just those three words, delivered like bullets. I stepped closer. "Hold on, we have permission." I filed the temporary stay form. The board approved it. He finally turned his head, slow, deliberate, like he liked the feeling of dragging time out. "That was before me," he said. "I enforce rules my way." I felt my jaw tighten. "My way." That was all I needed to hear. This was not about rules. This was about one man with a badge who wanted control. I tried to stay calm. What rule did I break? He pulled out a small booklet, brand new, clean, never bent, never used. He flipped through it without looking. Rule seven subsection one. No recreational vehicle may be visible from the street more than forty-eight hours. I nodded. "Check the file." We got an exception. Signed, stamped. He stepped closer to me, so close I could smell the cheap mint gum he was chewing. "Not anymore," he said. "Your exception is revoked." I blinked. "Revoked by who?" He smiled. "Me." Just that one word. "Me." The word that tells you he believes he is the entire HOA board by himself. I felt something rise in my chest. Not fear, just this tight, irritated heat, the kind that says, "This guy is picking the wrong fight." He walked back to the RV, ran his hand across the window like he was inspecting stolen property. Then he placed another sticker on the back, a bright red one. Tow ordered. I felt my hand curl into a fist. "Are you serious right now?" He did not stop. He kept placing stickers, left, right, door, window. Five stickers, five warnings, five little power trips stuck to my property. I took a deep breath. "You can't tow this without a board vote." He turned. "Oh, I can tow anything I want." That's when it clicked. This guy wasn't misinformed. He wasn't confused. He wasn't following rules. He was targeting us. "Why?" No idea. Not yet. He tapped his radio. "Tow truck ETA fifteen minutes." That was it. Fifteen minutes. Fifteen minutes before he ruined our summer plans. Fifteen minutes before he cost me thousands. Fifteen minutes before he felt like he won. I walked inside. My wife looked at me with wide eyes. "What happened?" I said. "He wants to tow the RV." She froze. "Why he can't do that?" "Call someone. Call the board. Call the city. Call." I already knew who to call. My cousin, city council, the guy the HOA never expected to get involved. The guy who hated corrupt authority more than anyone I ever met. I dialed his number. He picked up on the second ring. "Mark, what's wrong?" I took a breath. There is an HOA cop in my driveway trying to impound my RV. No reason, no paperwork, no board vote. He did not even pause. "What's his name?" I stepped outside again. The cop was by the RV door, trying the handle, trying to open it like he had the right. I asked, "Hey, what's your name?" He looked at me. His smirk grew. "It doesn't matter," he said. I stared at him. "It matters." He finally gave me his name, a name people in the neighborhood warned me about. A name tied to complaints, a name tied to threats, a name that showed up in three neighborhood group chats with red warnings next to it. I repeated it into the phone. My cousin went quiet, dead quiet, the kind of quiet that means someone knows something big. Then he said, "Give me five minutes. Do not let him tow anything. I am calling the city manager right now." I hung up, walked back outside. The HOA cop raised an eyebrow. "Everything okay?" he said, his voice almost mocking, almost daring me. I smiled. First time I smiled that morning. "Yeah," I said. "Everything is about to be very okay." He did not like that. I saw his jaw twitch. He stepped closer. "So you think someone is coming to save you?" I kept my voice steady. "No. I think someone is coming to save you from yourself." He scoffed. "You people always think you have connections. But this time, I win." He tapped his radio again. "Tow truck ETA ten minutes." I leaned against the RV, calm, patient, counting seconds. I knew my cousin. If he said five minutes, he meant four. The HOA cop paced back and forth, trying to look busy, trying to look official, trying to hold on to the little power he thought he had. Behind him, the RV stood, white, bright, clean, just sitting there like the center of a storm. My neighbor walked over. "What's going on?" The cop barked. "Step back." The neighbor raised his hands. "Wow, okay, chill." More neighbors peeked outside, phones out, recording, watching. The cop looked around. I saw that flicker of panic, tension, witnesses, cameras. He hated it. Then it happened. A black city SUV turned the corner, fast, direct, purposeful. The HOA cop's face dropped. Just a little, just enough. The door opened. My cousin stepped out. City badge clipped to his belt. He walked toward us, slow, calm, confident. The way someone walks when they know the rules better than anyone else. The HOA cop stiffened. "What is going on here?" My cousin didn't even look at him. He looked at the RV, looked at the stickers, looked at me. Then he said, "Mark, who gave him authority to issue an impound order on private property?" The HOA cop swallowed hard. His smirk was gone. The neighbors leaned in, quiet, watching, waiting. This was the moment everything flipped. If you were standing in my driveway at that moment, what would you want my cousin to say first to that HOA cop? Tell me in the comments. My cousin walked straight toward the RV, not fast, not slow, just steady, like a man who already knew how this would end. He touched one of the red stickers on the RV, pressed his thumb against it, let it peel slightly. Then he looked at the HOA cop for the very first time. "You issued these." The HOA cop lifted his chin. "I enforced the bylaws. That RV violates rule seven, subsection one. Visible from the street." My cousin nodded slowly, like he was listening to a child explain gravity. "So you believe you had the legal right to tow a residence vehicle without board approval, without due notice, without written cause, and without checking prior permissions?" The HOA cop crossed his arms. "I don't need approval. I have authority." My cousin took one step closer, not aggressive, not threatening, just close enough to make the air tight. "Where does your authority come from?" The HOA cop blinked. He wasn't expecting that question. He expected yelling. He expected threats. He expected someone to back down. Not this. Not a calm voice that felt like a trap. "It comes from the HOA board," he said. My cousin raised his eyebrow. "Which board member signed your impound order?" Silence, long, uncomfortable silence. The neighbors shifted, cameras zoomed, someone whispered, "Oh, he screwed." The HOA cop cleared his throat. "I don't need signatures. I can act on behalf of the board." My cousin took another step closer. "So you're telling me, you are the board?" The cop's face twitched. "That's not what I said." My cousin's voice dropped, low, controlled, sharp as glass. "That is exactly what you said." He gestured toward the RV. "Tow stickers, red, yellow, bright in the morning sun. You threatened to tow property that was legally approved for temporary stay. You revoked an exception you had no authority to revoke. You placed unauthorized impound notices on a residence's personal vehicle. And you attempted to enter the RV without consent." The HOA cop puffed his chest. "That's my job." My cousin stared at him, long, cold, silent. "You just described five crimes." The HOA cop took a small step back. His boots scraped the pavement. He glanced at the neighbors, then at me, then at the SUV. He did not look so confident anymore. I crossed my arms, watching, listening, enjoying every second. The HOA cop tried to speak. "It's not, look, I was told this RV was a problem. I was told he ignores rules. I was told..." My cousin cut him off. "By who?" The cop's jaw locked. He didn't answer. My cousin didn't blink. "Name, the person?" The cop exhaled sharp. "I don't have to tell you that." My cousin smiled, small, deadly, like a man who knew he had the final move. "You do when you are operating under the city's jurisdiction. HOA enforcement falls under municipal oversight when it involves property seizure." The cop swallowed hard. He knew. He knew that term, property seizure. He knew it was dangerous territory. The neighbors leaned closer, like they were in a stadium. The HOA cop tried to recover. "I didn't seize anything." "You attempted to," my cousin said. "That's enough." He pulled a small notepad from his pocket, slow, purposeful. "Name," he repeated. The HOA cop rubbed his neck, shifted his weight, looked like a student being grilled by the principal. Then he gave the name, a name I recognized, a board member, the one with the perfectly trimmed bushes and the perfectly fake smile and the perfectly annoying habit of reporting people for breathing wrong. My cousin wrote the name down, then pointed at the cop's badge. "What authority were you told you had?" The cop hesitated, then, "Full." My cousin chuckled. "Full authority, from a single board member, on private property, without a vote, without due process, without legal jurisdiction." He flipped the page, jotted something down. "Okay," he said. "We're done here." The HOA cop blinked. "What do you mean we're done?" I called the tow truck. My cousin didn't even look at him. "You're canceling it." The HOA cop tried to steady his voice. "You don't get to tell me." My cousin turned, slow, controlled, like a judge delivering a sentence. "I am telling you to cancel it, because if that truck touches one inch of this RV, you will be personally liable for unauthorized seizure abusive position and violation of municipal code." The HOA cop froze, eyes flicked at the neighbors, at the cameras, and me. Then he lifted his radio, static hissed, "Cancel the pickup." My neighbor whispered, "Oh my god." The HOA cop lowered the radio, jaw tight, fists tighter, face red. My cousin wasn't done. He stepped forward. "So here is what happens next. I am filing a formal investigation. The board member who misled you will be called in. You will submit your badge number, your directives, and your incident report." The HOA cop stepped back. "I didn't write a report." My cousin nodded. "That makes it worse." The cop gritted his teeth. "Look, I was just doing my job." My cousin leaned in. "Your job is to enforce rules within the law, not invent new ones, not target families, not act like you own the neighborhood." The neighbors murmured, phones recording every second. The HOA cop's face twitched. His hands shook. His voice cracked just slightly. "I didn't know." "Okay, I didn't know he had connections." I stepped forward. "It shouldn't matter if I did." He looked at me, really looked, for the first time, and I saw it, a flicker, a little spark, not of fear, but of regret. Maybe he realized he pushed too far. Maybe he realized he acted like a bully. Maybe he realized his little power trip wasn't worth the fallout. My cousin tapped his notepad closed. "You'll hear from the city in the next forty-eight hours. Stay available. Do not issue any further actions on this property." The HOA cop exhaled, long, defeated. He walked away, not the tough power walking man from before, just a tired guy dragging his feet. I watched him go, his boots scuffing the pavement, his shoulders down. His fake authority peeled off him like those stickers on my RV. When he reached the sidewalk, he turned, looked at me, his voice low, "This isn't over." My cousin answered for me. "Oh, trust me." "It is." The cop kept walking, down the street, past the mailboxes, out of sight. My cousin turned to me. "You okay?" I nodded. "Yeah, thanks." He put a hand on my shoulder. "Mark, this guy has been a problem. For a long time, people complained. No one took it seriously. Your case might finally expose all of it." I felt something shift inside me, a spark, a sense of fight, a sense of justice. "I'm ready for whatever comes next." My cousin looked at the RV, looked at the stickers, looked back at me. "Then get ready, because this board isn't going to let this slide." I felt a cold shiver, not fear, just that feeling you get before a storm. The neighbors slowly walked away, whispering, talking, speculating. The SUV drove off. My cousin gave me a nod, left me standing there in the quiet street, RV behind me, stickers still hanging. Red, yellow, bright. The morning felt calm, almost too calm. Then my phone buzzed. Unknown number, local HOA area code. I knew. I knew it was starting. Whatever they planned next, whatever retaliation they had in mind, whatever meeting they wanted to call, whatever trap they thought they could set, I answered, slow breath, calm voice, "Hello." And the voice on the other end said something that made my stomach drop. "What do you think the HOA said when they called me right after the showdown? Drop your guess in the comments." The voice on the phone was calm, too calm, the kind of calm that feels fake, the kind of calm someone uses when they're trying to sound professional. But you can hear the anger hiding under the surface. "Hello, Mark. This is Valerie from the HOA board." Yeah, her. The same board member whose name the cop gave, the same board member who smiled at everyone but hated being challenged. The same board member whose yard was perfect and life was messy. I swallowed. "What's this about?" She did a soft laugh, the type of laugh rich people use when they think they're above you. "I heard there was..." An incident. I stared at the RV, stickers flapping slightly in the breeze. "Yeah," I said. "You could call it that." She inhaled, long, slow. I could picture her sitting at her desk with that fake botanical wallpaper behind her. "Well," she said, "it seems there is confusion about your RV." Confusion, right? Like five stickers and a tow truck were just a misunderstanding. I kept my voice steady. "There's no confusion. We had approval." The HOA cop tried to override it. She paused, just a beat, just long enough to make it awkward. "Yes, I'm aware of his enthusiasm." Enthusiasm? She really used that word, like he was a child who colored outside the lines, not a grown man who tried to have my property seized. "So what do you want?" I asked. She finally spoke in her real tone, sharp, clipped, annoyed. "We need you to bring your RV to the next compliance review meeting tonight at seven." I blinked. "You want me to bring an RV to a meeting?" "No," she said, more irritated. "I want you to attend. We need to discuss whether your approval is valid." I stepped back, frowned. "Is this retaliation?" Her voice rose, fast. "No. This is policy." I laughed, not a big laugh, just a short breath that sounded like disbelief. "Policy, you mean the policy that didn't exist until ten minutes after the cop tried to tow my property?" She went silent again, then, she said the one thing that told me this wasn't just an incident, this was personal. "You made a scene today, Mark. You embarrassed one of our officers. The board takes that seriously." There it was, the truth, the thing she didn't mean to let slip. It wasn't about the RV. It wasn't about rules. It was about control, and I broke her illusion of it. "I embarrassed him because he abused his authority." I said, "And you empowered him." She exhaled, sharp, angry. "You will attend at seven. If you don't, the board will make a decision without you." The line went dead. No goodbye, no thank you, just a threat wrapped in a sentence. I looked at the phone, then at the RV, then at the empty street. The quiet felt heavier now, like the neighborhood itself was waiting for something. My wife walked outside. "What happened? Who was it?" I rubbed my forehead. "The board. They want me at a meeting tonight." She pulled her arms around herself. "That sounds like a trap." "It is," I said, no hesitation, no doubt. She looked at the RV, looked at the stickers, looked at me. "So what do we do?" I didn't answer right away, because I wasn't sure. Walking into a room full of people already plotting felt like stepping into a cage, but not going. That felt worse. "We go," I said. "We're not letting them rewrite the story." She nodded, not confident, not scared, just decided. The day crept by slow, each hour heavier, each minute colder. Around four PM, I saw the HOA cop's golf cart drive past our house, not stopping, just passing, looking, checking, watching. He didn't wave, he didn't blink, just scanned our driveway like he was memorizing it. By six PM, the neighborhood got quiet, suspicious quiet. Garbage bins were stacked neatly. Cars were parked perfectly. Lawns looked trimmed. It was like the entire neighborhood knew something was happening. My wife and I walked down the street, past mailboxes, past quiet windows, past people pretending not to stare. The HOA clubhouse was at the end, small building, white walls, fake columns, the kind of place that pretends to be formal, but really is just four folding tables and a printer that jams twice an hour. The parking lot had only a few cars, but I knew. I knew more people were inside, waiting. When we walked in, the air was stiff, smelled like lemon cleaner and tension. Five board members sat behind a long fake wood table, Valerie in the middle, hair perfect, smile stiff, a sharp. The HOA cop sat in a chair to the side. He didn't look at me. He looked at the floor. That told me a lot. He wasn't as confident here as he was in my driveway. Valerie tapped a pen. "Mark, thank you for joining us. Please sit." Her voice sugary, fake, plastic, the kind of tone customer service uses before they tell you they can't issue a refund. I sat. My wife sat next to me. The board members shuffled papers, cleared throats, pretended to be official. Valerie folded her hands. "As you know, your RV has been a topic of concern." My wife crossed her arms. "Only because your officer tried to tow it illegally." One board member leaned forward, older man, gray mustache, sunglasses on the table. "It wasn't illegal," he said. "It was a misunderstanding." I leaned in. "So you admit he had no written authorization?" He hesitated, looked at Valerie. She shot him a look that said shut up. He leaned back. Valerie forced a smile. "The point is, we want to move forward." She slid a paper across the table. I stared at it. It was a notice, printed today, fresh ink, fresh lies. "Based on recent concerns," she said. "The board is reconsidering all temporary stay approvals, including yours." I picked up the paper. "Reconsidering or revoking?" She didn't answer, which was the answer. My wife clenched her jaw. "You can't change rules because your cop messed up." One of the other board members leaned forward, a woman with short hair and tired eyes. "It's not about rules," she said. "It's about fairness." I raised an eyebrow. "To who?" She didn't answer. Valerie straightened her shoulders. "We have received several complaints about your RV blocking visibility and lowering aesthetic harmony." I almost laughed. Aesthetic harmony. The RV was white, clean, parked straight, didn't block anything. I looked around the room, board members shifting, avoiding eye contact, except the HOA cop. He stared at me now, tight expression, like he didn't know what would happen. I put the paper down. "So let me get this straight," I said. "You're trying to revoke an approval because your officer overstepped, and now you need to justify his mistakes." Valerie leaned in, her smile gone. "The board has authority to make changes as needed." There it was again, authority, their favorite word. I took a slow breath, let it fill my chest, let the room go quiet. My cousin is filing an investigation with the city. You could hear the sound of the entire room freeze. Valerie's face twitched, just slightly, just enough. Her pen tapped faster. Her voice clipped. "We are aware." The older man muttered. "This is unnecessary." My wife leaned forward. "You tried to tow our property without legal cause. The city should know." Valerie's jaw tightened. "Mark, this meeting is about cooperation, not conflict." I stared at her, calm, cold, done with the games. Then stop hiding behind rules you invented this morning. She inhaled. "Your approval is suspended pending review." I whispered, "So, revoked?" She didn't deny it. The HOA cop shifted in his seat, hands clenched, feet tapping, like he didn't want to be connected to this. My wife grabbed my hand, tight, steady, silent support. I sat back, looked at every board member, one by one, let the silence stretch. Then I smiled, small, sharp, deadly. "All right, if that's your final decision, then you just made the biggest mistake possible." They stared, confused, annoyed, curious. I leaned forward, lowered my voice. "Because when the city hears everything that happened today, this suspension won't matter. What will matter is how many laws you broke to get to this point." Valerie's pen dropped. The gray mustache guy swallowed. The short-haired woman looked away. The HOA cop whispered, "Oh no." The tension was so thick it felt like the room itself was holding its breath. And before anyone could reply, the door opened. Someone unexpected walked in, someone none of us thought would show up, and the room changed instantly. "Who do you think walked into that meeting at that exact moment? And why do you think the board reacted that way? Tell me your guess in the comments." I couldn't believe what had just happened. The RV was parked exactly where it always had been, my home away from home, my little fortress of freedom, and now it was under attack. I was standing in my driveway, trying to breathe through the storm of anger and disbelief swirling inside me. When the HOA cop stepped out of his patrol car, he had that smug look, the one that says, "I hold the power, and you're nothing." "You can't park this here," he said, pointing at the RV like it was some alien object that had no right to exist. I blinked. "Excuse me. It's my property. I've always parked here, and I followed every rule. You don't get to just take it." He smiled, but it didn't reach his eyes, and that's when I knew this was personal. "You'll have to tow it," he said, voice low and threatening, and I swear I could feel the tension in the air crackle like electricity. I swallowed hard, trying to keep calm, but the rage inside me was boiling. I thought of every time this HOA board had tried to control me, my family, our lives, and I realized, they were running out of time. I reached for my phone, and that's when my cousin's name flashed on the screen, the same cousin who sat on the city council, the one person in this neighborhood who actually understood the game and had the power to change it. I answered, "Hey, it's happening. They're trying to impound the RV." There was silence on the other end, then a low chuckle. "I'll handle it," he said. I wanted to say, "Handle it how?" But something in his voice made me trust him, made me feel like maybe, just maybe. The tables were about to turn. The HOA cop started circling the RV. The H O A cop started circling the RV, like a predator circling prey, checking the tires, measuring the distance from the curb, writing down some imaginary violation. I don't even know. It felt like a scene out of a horror movie, suburban style. And that's when the neighbors started to peek out from behind curtains, some curious, some scared, some enjoying the show. Because let's be honest, everyone loves a little H O A drama when it's not happening to them. I could see the wheels of bureaucracy grinding slowly. Every step he took was calculated, every motion designed to make me feel powerless. But this time, I wasn't going to let it slide. I walked up slowly, hands in pockets, keeping my voice calm. Look, I've called the city council. My cousin is aware. You don't get to touch my RV. He paused, glanced at me, and then back at the RV, like he was thinking, does he even know what he's doing? And maybe he didn't, because in that moment, I saw a flicker of uncertainty cross his face, the first crack in the armor of arrogance. My cousin arrived five minutes later, in his black S U V, looking calm but serious, like he owned the street. The H O A cop's posture changed immediately. His chest puffed out, but his eyes darted nervously. You're trespassing. The cop tried, voice shaking slightly. My cousin stepped out, hands on his hips. Actually, I'm here on official city business, and I suggest you step back, or this becomes a bigger problem than you're ready for. I could see the cop's face turn pale, the kind of pale that comes when you realize you've misjudged someone badly. What, what do you mean? He stammered. My cousin smiled, the kind of smile that sends chills down your spine. Not cruel, just unstoppable. You can't tow this RV, it's protected under city ordinance, and any action you take will be considered harassment. You understand? I felt like I was watching a movie, except it was my life, my RV, and my freedom on the line. The cop nodded, muttering something under his breath, and I knew he wasn't going to push anymore, not with my cousin there. Not with the authority looming over him like a dark cloud ready to rain down justice. Neighbors were stepping out now, whispers running through the street, and I could feel the energy shift. The power that had always belonged to the H O A board was crumbling, piece by piece rule by petty rule. I wanted to laugh, or cry, maybe both, because it felt surreal, like I was finally seeing the tide turn after years of watching them walk over families, kids, elderly, anyone who dared to exist outside their rigid little rules. The RV stood tall, majestic even, in the driveway, safe, untouchable. And for the first time in a long time, I felt free. But just as we started to relax, I heard the faintest sound, tires screeching, and a car pulling up, fast, too fast. I turned, heart pounding, and my stomach dropped. It wasn't the cop, it wasn't the neighbors, it was something else, something worse, something that made me realize. This story wasn't over yet, and in that moment I knew, if this escalated, it was gonna get personal, a very personal. And I had no idea what was coming next. Have you ever felt that moment, when you think you're safe, only to realize the storm hasn't even started yet? Tell me, what would you do if someone tried to take away something that's yours, right in front of your eyes? And you had the power to stop them, but didn't know the consequences? The screeching of tires made my heart jump into my throat. I turned toward the street, expecting the H O A cop to be doubling back with some underhanded trick. But what I saw made me stop dead in my tracks. A black S U V with tinted windows rolled up slowly, purposefully, and I instantly recognized the driver. It was my cousin, again, but this time he wasn't alone. Two other city council members stepped out, notebooks in hand, cameras rolling on their phones, and suddenly, the power dynamics on our street had completely shifted. The H O A cop froze, like a deer caught in headlights, and I could see the panic beginning to creep across his face. He opened his mouth to say something, anything, but nothing came out. I felt a strange thrill, a mix of fear, adrenaline, and satisfaction, because I knew, deep down, that this was the first time he was seeing real consequences for his petty cruelty. Good afternoon, one of the council members said, voice calm but firm. We received reports of possible harassment and illegal towing of private property. We're here to investigate. The cop swallowed hard, tried to straighten his crooked uniform, but there was no authority left in his posture. He looked small, powerless, and I realized that all the threats, all the fines, all the H O A rules, didn't matter when faced with the law and people who actually cared about justice. My cousin walked toward the RV, slowly, deliberately, as if saying, this is mine to protect. I felt a lump in my throat. He was my family, but in this moment, he was more than that. He was a shield. The neighbors started peeking from behind their blinds again, whispers and murmurs filling the air, some shocked, some delighted. Because there's something incredibly satisfying about seeing someone who's always had power finally face limits. The cop finally found his voice. Uh, this, this is private property. I was just, uh. Just what? My cousin interrupted. Trying to abuse your authority? Trying to bully someone who's done nothing wrong? The cop's face turned red, and I could practically see the gears grinding inside his head, trying to figure out how to wiggle out of this, and failing miserably. I stepped closer to the RV, hands shaking slightly, because I didn't know what was gonna happen next, but I wasn't gonna leave. Not today, not ever. One of the council members pulled out a small device, like a camera, and started recording the interaction. Everything here will be documented. Any attempt to tow the vehicle or intimidate, the owner will have legal consequences. The cop swallowed again, clearly realizing that this wasn't a game anymore, and I could see him thinking, I should have never messed with these people. The tension in the air was thick, like a storm about to break. And yet, for the first time in a long time, I felt calm, because I knew I had allies, and sometimes that's all you need to turn the tables. I glanced at the neighbors. Some of them were smiling, some were shaking their heads, but I could tell a few were impressed, maybe even a little scared of the H O A's power, and what happens when it's challenged. The council members talked quietly among themselves, and then my cousin turned to the cop. You're done here, leave before this escalates further. Consider this a warning. The cop hesitated, then slowly, muttering something about rules and procedures, walked back to his car and drove off, leaving the street silent, except for the murmurs of people who had witnessed the downfall of a small-town tyrant. I leaned against the RV, heart still racing, and suddenly, the reality hit me. This wasn't just about parking, or RVs, or petty H O A fines. This was about freedom, about standing up to people who think they can control your life, and realizing that you don't have to take it. My cousin clapped me on the shoulder. You did the right thing, you stayed calm, let us handle it, but you made sure you didn't back down. I nodded, swallowing hard. I just, I didn't want to see it taken, not like that, not by him. He smiled. That's why family matters, and why it pays to have friends in the right places. We laughed a little, but the laughter was nervous, because we both knew, the H O A might be gone from our street for now, but this battle, it's never truly over. I looked at the RV, standing there proud, safe, untouchable, and I realized something. This vehicle wasn't just a machine, it was a symbol, a symbol of resistance, of patience, and of taking back control of your own life. And just when I thought we were in the clear, I noticed a small envelope tucked under the RV's windshield wiper, plain, white, and with my name on it. I picked it up, heart hammering in my chest, and slowly opened it. Inside was a single note, written in perfect looping handwriting. Rules can change, but people don't. Watch your back. I froze, the blood drained from my face, because I realized, someone was watching us. Someone from the H O A, or worse, someone who wanted revenge. And this, this wasn't over. I looked at my cousin, his expression serious, reading the same note, and we both understood. This was just the beginning. The calm victory we felt, it was temporary, a pause in a war we didn't even know had started, and I had no idea what the next move would be, or who would strike first. The RV sat there, gleaming in the late afternoon sun, but for the first time, it felt like a fragile bubble, safe for now, but waiting for the inevitable storm. Have you ever felt that victory, only to realize danger is still lurking, closer than you think? If your H O A ever tried to push you around, what would you do when the rules aren't on your side? And the only thing standing between you and disaster is a little bit of luck, and someone you trust? The note in my hand felt heavier than anything I had ever held. Rules can change, but people don't. Watch your back. My eyes darted to the RV, standing there innocently in the driveway, but now it felt like a target, like someone had their sights set on it, and on me. I felt my heart race, adrenaline mixing with fear, and for a moment, I questioned everything. Did the H O A have some secret ally, or was this someone entirely unexpected? Someone who wanted revenge for our little victory? I looked at my cousin. His calm demeanor hadn't wavered, but I could see the tension in his jaw. We need to be careful, he said, voice low. This is more than just an RV dispute now. Someone is trying to intimidate you, test your limits. I swallowed hard. Test me, or scare me? He gave me a small, knowing smile. Both. Sometimes those go together. The neighborhood felt different that evening, quieter, almost too quiet, like the calm before a storm. And I couldn't shake the feeling that eyes were on me, from behind blinds, fences, maybe even across the street. I checked the RV again, walked around it, every bolt, every tire, trying to convince myself it was safe, but deep down I knew safety was an illusion. Later that night, I was sitting on the porch, staring at the streetlights, trying to plan my next move, when my phone buzzed. It was a message from an unknown number. Nice try, but don't think this is over. I froze. My fingers shook as I held the phone, every nerve in my body screaming. I called my cousin immediately. It's back, they're not done. Someone is watching us, texting me now. He answered after a single ring. I figured, that note was just a warning, a psychological move. But don't panic, you need to stay calm, let them make the first mistake. I tried to breathe, I knew he was right, but calm was hard when someone was threatening you, someone who had already shown they could try to manipulate the system, the H O A, people who had money, influence, and zero morals. The next morning, I woke up to a strange sound, tires crunching on gravel. I looked outside, and my stomach dropped. A black van, unmarked, slowly rolled past my driveway, circled the block, and I could swear the driver was watching me. I slammed the door, heart hammering. My cousin showed up ten minutes later, as if on cue. They're serious, he said. We need to document everything, every vehicle, every move. Don't let them get to you emotionally. We play smart, and we play legal. I nodded, but the fear wasn't going away. It was like a shadow following me, a low hum of danger I couldn't ignore. Over the next few days, things escalated. Small things at first. My trash cans moved, a dead plant on the lawn that I knew I hadn't touched, notes left on the mailbox with veiled threats. Nothing illegal yet, but enough to make me paranoid. I started sleeping in shifts, checking the RV at night, making sure it was still there, and every time I went outside, I felt someone's gaze, invisible but tangible, like the air itself was heavy with threat. My cousin called daily, keeping me updated on the H O A board, city council moves, anything to stay one step ahead. Then came the breaking point. I was sitting in the living room when I heard a loud bang, like a metal pipe hitting something hard, and ran outside to see. The RV, scratched along the side, deep, long gouges, not enough to destroy it, but enough to make a statement. I felt my blood boil, rage, fear, and adrenaline all mixing together. I called the police, filed a report, but they were slow, bureaucratic, useless in the moment. And I realized, for the first time, the war I was in wasn't just about parking rules, it was personal. I looked at my cousin as he arrived moments later, and he was calm, colder than usual. They want a reaction, he said. That's what makes them powerful. Don't give them what they want, but we need evidence, and we need witnesses. We spent the rest of the day documenting every scratch, taking pictures, making a timeline, and I started to notice something, little patterns, signs that the same person had been here before, leaving the notes, the plants, the moves, all leading up to this moment. The realization hit me, this wasn't random, this wasn't just the H O A flexing power, this was someone with a vendetta, someone who wanted to see me crumble, and they were methodical. That night, I stayed inside watching from the window, the RV lit by porch lights, and I saw movement across the street, a shadow slipping behind a tree, then disappearing. I felt a chill run down my spine, but I also felt determination. If they wanted a battle, they were gonna get one, but it wasn't going to be on their terms. We planned carefully, set up cameras, extra locks, recorded everything, every threat, every move, because I knew, in the end, the truth was on my side, and with the city council backing me, the H O A and whoever was behind this couldn't win forever. But late that night, just before I was about to sleep, another note appeared, taped to my front door. This one read, you can't hide, not forever. I held it in my hands, trembling, my mind racing. Who was doing this? How far would they go? And more importantly, what was the next move I should make? I looked at the RV, my symbol of freedom, my home away from home, and realized, this wasn't just about protecting a vehicle anymore. It was about standing my ground, facing fear head-on, and not letting anyone, no matter how powerful, dictate what I could or couldn't do in my own life. I knew one thing for sure, this fight was far from over. And I turned to the camera. If I had one there, I would ask, have you ever felt threatened by someone who thinks they can control your life? And you know the only way to win is to stand firm, no matter the risk? Because that's where I am, standing, waiting, preparing, knowing the storm is coming, and I have to face it, head-on, or lose everything. The night was darker than usual, like the sky itself was holding its breath, waiting for something to happen. I sat on the porch, staring at the RV, my fortress, my symbol of freedom, the scratches from the last attack still visible, a reminder that someone out there wanted to make me crumble. Every shadow, every rustle of leaves made my heart skip a beat, and I could feel the tension in the air, like electricity before a storm. My cousin arrived, as he always did, calm, confident, and with that look that said, whatever happens, we handle this together. We know who's behind this, he said, voice low, almost a whisper. And tonight, we end it. I felt a jolt of fear mixed with relief. Finally, a chance to take control, to put an end to the madness that had been creeping into our lives for weeks. We set up lights, cameras, and a few hidden devices around the driveway, every angle covered. If someone came for the RV, we'd know, and they wouldn't get away with it. Hours passed, silence, the kind that makes every creek of a tree sound like an intruder. Then, around midnight, I saw movement, a figure creeping along the street, slow, deliberate, exactly how the H O A cop and his allies had moved in the past. I held my breath, heart pounding, and my cousin whispered, stay calm, let them make the mistake. The figure approached, the RV tools in hand, intent clear. I pressed record on the hidden camera, every step, every motion, and then my cousin stepped out, phone in hand, lights flashing suddenly, and the figure froze. You're caught, my cousin said calmly, voice carrying across the quiet street. Leave now, or we call the police. You're done. The figure tried to flee, but we had every angle covered. Within seconds, the shadows revealed the truth. It was the H O A cop, but not acting alone, a neighbor from the board, the one who had always complained about the RV. And now, finally, their game was over. I felt a mix of relief and shock, the people who had terrorized me for so long, standing exposed, their fear now matching the fear they had caused me. The police arrived minutes later, corroborating the recordings, the notes, the minor damages, and took statements. Every piece of evidence, every plan, every intimidation tactic laid bare. I watched as they were led away, faces red, humbled, no smugness left, no power, just the realization that cruelty has consequences, especially when your target isn't alone. The neighborhood began to wake up. The neighborhood began to wake up, whispers of what had happened traveling fast. My neighbors peeking from behind curtains, some shocked, some amused, some even applauding silently. Because deep down, everyone loves seeing the little tyrants brought down. I walked over to the RV, ran my hand along its scratches, and felt a strange sense of pride. This wasn't just a vehicle. It was a symbol of persistence, of standing up, and not letting fear dictate your life. My cousin clapped me on the shoulder. You handled this the right way. You stayed calm, documented everything, and let us help you. That's how you win. I nodded, but deep down, I knew the lesson went further. This wasn't just about the RV, or HOA rules, or scratches on metal. It was about life, about taking a stand, and realizing that fear is temporary, courage is permanent. I thought about all the late nights, the notes, the threats, the shadows, the constant anxiety. And realized that all of it led to this moment, this victory. Small, yes, but significant, because it proved something important. No one, no petty cop, no tyrant HOA board, no bully, can control your life if you refuse to let them. The RV stood there, gleaming under the first light of dawn, safe, untouchable. A silent witness to everything we had endured. I smiled, a small, relieved smile, and thought about how quickly the power of fear disappears when met with truth, documentation, and unwavering resolve. Later that day, my cousin and I walked through the neighborhood, talking with neighbors, sharing the story, warning others about what had happened. Teaching them that standing up doesn't always require a battle. Sometimes, it just requires courage, support, and the right timing. The HOA board members involved were banned from certain neighborhood activities. Fines, legal warnings, and their influence, gone, evaporated like mist in the morning sun. I stood in front of the RV, took a deep breath, and realized something I hadn't considered before all of this. This story, our story, wasn't just about revenge or power. It was about community, about family, about knowing when to fight, and when to wait for the right moment, and about trusting the people who truly have your back. The scratches on the RV would fade eventually, but the lesson, the memory, the triumph, that would stay forever. And as I finally stepped inside the RV, locking the doors, safe. I couldn't help but wonder, how many other people out there are dealing with petty tyrants? Hidden agendas and intimidation in their neighborhoods, silently fighting battles that feel impossible. I want you to think about it, and I want you to answer honestly. If someone tried to take what is yours, your home, your freedom, your peace of mind, what would you do to protect it? Would you stay silent, or would you rise, document, fight, and take back what's rightfully yours, just like we did? Because the truth is, courage isn't the absence of fear. It's standing firm, even when fear is all around you. And sometimes victory is just waiting for those who refuse to back down. Have you ever faced a bully in your neighborhood or HOA? Comment below how you would handle them, or share your own HOA nightmare. I want to read them all.